A Council Bluffs Savings Bank, our goal is to help you, your families and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made local. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Council Bluffs Savings Bank, hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, seven o'clock, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution of America, and to the republic of the world, with all my heart, devotion, and faith, and justice.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the deletion of item 3H.
Second?
Any discussion? Can you kind of, Lynn, tell why we're deleting that maybe?
We're just looking for some clarification on inside versus outside city limits of the appointee, so we're just going to clarify that and then we'll come back in two weeks and vote on it.
All right. We have a motion on the table on the consent agenda with a proposal for deletion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we have two public hearings. I need to get my cheat sheet in front of me. Procedure in the public hearing is if you have comment for the public, please step to the, if you have a public comment, please step to the podium, give your name and address for the record. On public hearings, you have 10 minutes to speak. On other items, if you do want to speak on those, you have a five-minute time limit. This is the time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6211, which amends the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.040. By rezoning the property legally described as being lots 1 through 3, Block 27 Everett Sedition, from R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District to I2 General Industrial District, and lots 4 and 5, Block 27 Everett Sedition, from I1 Light Industrial District to I2 General Industrial District as defined in chapter 15.21. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? Or anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, what is the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of ordinance 6212, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.040. By rezoning the property line north of the east-south Omaha Bridge Road, east of Mosquito Creek, south of Highway 275/92, and west of the railroad from C2 Commercial District and R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District to I1 Light Industrial District and A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District as defined in chapter 15, colon, zoning. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? Please step forward and give your name and address for the record.
Dag Nielsen, 1400 East-South Omaha Bridge Road.
Dag, can I get you to pull it down just a little bit? So, thanks.
1400 East-South Omaha Bridge Road, which is the last property on the east-south Omaha Bridge Road. Nielsen's have had that property since 1951. And while I'm not really against the rezoning, except for my own, at a later time, I don't know how many of you have been down there lately, but we have a big amount of heavy, heavy, heavy equipment constantly. There's a lot of traffic from the CFI place and the semis coming and going at all hours. They go to the south. And a few vehicles daily come to my place, morning and night. The machines, let's see here, just lost my, at my advanced age, please excuse me, they have just constructed a new road at the end of east-south Omaha Bridge Road going south. So that means there's more traffic going there. It's going to be there for a long time. And the school buses will soon be in that mess. And we still have the train tracks, and that's going to be a while yet. And why they came in there and decided to rezone the two properties facing the south Omaha as industrial, then they took my commercial property away from me, which is the front, we have a big frontage, we've been commercial forever, and they want to put me in as parks and agriculture. And that's going to lower the value of my property by doing that. And I think it's just something that should be straightened out with the traffic and why is my property not like the other two? We're all together. I don't know what they're doing. And in 1994, the city did have a plan that listed that whole one strip as commercial. Now, the back is agriculture, that's for sure, the back acreages. But until the trains are gone, nothing really wants to come down there. And they're not going to be gone for a year or two yet. So I think that it's just a little quick to be changing the zoning. And then again, I think it's, why are they taking my commercial zoning from me? And I realize what I have there now is going to stay, but it lowers the value of my property by doing that. I just don't think it's, they've done it right. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for listening to me. Any questions?
Which parcel is it on this map? Do we know which?
Next to the creek.
Far left.
The far end to the creek. We have a front 10 acres that was always commercial, and then in the back's 11 acres that's always been agriculture.
So it's the yellow section next to the blue section, ma'am?
I can't make any tell that map, of that map, to be fair to you.
Well, the tire company requested the zoning change.
Yeah, just the tire company, but they come in and want to do everybody.
And then the city department recommended an expanded zoning change. And the expanded area is the hash marked area to the east and northeast of the applicant's request. The applicant's request is in the red, would be my interpretation, and then the rest is the expanded area, which is in the hash, again, hash marks on that map.
Okay. The property next to us at the present time is empty except for a, kind of like a school have rented the lower half of one building. And there hasn't been anybody in there for years. It's been empty because of the railroad track is why the guy left in the first place.
So you're in the blue section then?
Is it up next to the creek?
I think she's in the yellow part.
She is in the yellow part?
Yeah.
I thought yellow, and then I switched to the blue.
We go clear to the creek.
Okay.
And the front section has always been commercial since, well, originally, it wasn't even in the city.
And I understand, according to the staff communication we received, ma'am, it says that you have an in-home dog kennel. Am I looking at the right properties? Is that you, ma'am?
Yes, uh-huh, that's me.
Okay.
And we've lived there, but we've always lived there. I mean, somebody's always lived there.
And I understand that they're saying, in essence, that they're agreeing with you in this report, saying it's a non-conforming use, which is just legalese for it. It existed before it was zoned differently, so you can keep doing it.
Well, I understand that, but I'm talking about a future, parks and recreation. And why would they put industry and agriculture all in one big group? It's all on floodplain. And they want to zone all that back as...
Historically, agricultural's been used as a placeholder, so that when an applicant comes forward and wants to rezone it, it gives the city the opportunity to say it's agricultural now. What do you want to do? Bring us a plan, let us know what you're going to do. They call it a placeholder. But this is a second reading, and we don't have the staff here to kind of tell us what their thoughts were on the expanded, expanding the requested area.
I just don't understand at all. And it's such a mess down there now. Why they even have to do it now is beyond me.
Well, and I don't want to misinterpret what you're saying by a mess, but I think they're just trying to get some uniform zoning down there because there is, as you heard me read, where parts are zoned C2, parts are R3.
Well, I think all across the front there, it's C2.
Okay.
All the three businesses across the front have been C2 for years. Isn't that what you're seeing? Or are you?
Well, it doesn't show the timeframes of when they were established.
So can we pass it through and then we could just...
Yeah, does not wave.
The staff report indicated that...
And then we live there.
It does give the reason.
It's always been that way.
It does give the reason, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we should discuss that a bit. It does seem to give the reason in the report.
Well, then...
First page, was it?
First, A2.
Page 87 of 4.8.
Seventy-nine, okay.
Last paragraph.
Okay, thank you. I lost my place.
Says, "Commercial development of the Schidnivikenskill has not been realized at that location," and they're trying to align the use down there with the potential use, so...
And it's right next to the creek, so the odds that it would be even allowed to build commercial C2 anytime ever is very unlikely, because we just don't let buildings get built next to bodies of water anymore, because we're all tired of bailing it out, no pun intended, paying people for the property when they flood every 10, 15 years.
Oh, yeah, because they're saying it's identified on the FEMA map, so that's probably why that's...
Yeah, it's listed on the floodplain, yeah. So it probably will never be commercial.
Or residential.
Or residential, surely, yeah. No mortgage company would...
And are you following what they're saying? If it's in the flood map, by law, you would not be allowed to build a commercial property there anyhow.
Good point.
Federal flood, they're there pre-existing probably to the mapping, but you talked about a diminished value in selling your property because it's listed commercial, and you could sell it as commercial and someone would develop it. By law, they're not allowed to develop it because it's in the floodplain.
They can't use what's already there?
They could use what's there, but they could not add to it. They couldn't build new on that.
And if there were a flood and it were, you know, to be destroyed even more than half, it couldn't be rebuilt under federal law. And that's something where our hands are tied, so we don't even have any say in that.
Again, second reading. If we pass it to the third reading, can you be here the two weeks? Yeah. All right, we'll get you a better answer.
Do you want her at study session or just the nighttime session?
No, just the council meeting's fine, but somebody document it that we want to talk about at study session, so...
And I wanted, have we made the motion? Are we to discussion?
I don't think we have a motion yet.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, okay. I wanted to discuss it, and I didn't think...
Anyone else like to speak against? Anyone like to speak in favor?
Ryan Glenn of Peterson Law, 215 South Main Street. I'm here today to represent the interests of Scott and Deborah Glenn of CFI Tire, Commercial Farm Industrial Tire Service, located at 1520 East-South Omaha Bridge Road in Council Bluffs. Mr. Glenn, as you've seen in your application before you tonight, would like to add an additional service for his customers with the sale of used automobiles. He's been in business in Council Bluffs at this location as an owner since approximately 2003. On the property, he currently operates a retail tire sales shop and conducts minor automobile repair and commercial trucking vehicle equipment repair. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. until 5:30 p.m., and on Saturdays, from 9 to 2. He does not intend to change his hours of operation. He employs several full-time and part-time workers at this location, which will also remain the same. His application for rezoning is to change the current zoning designation from C2 to I1. He would like to expand his business to include a full-service used car sales business that will allow him to become a licensed automobile dealer in the state of Iowa. He has already begun the process to obtain his dealer's license in the state. With respect to parking, that was addressed in the staff report, Mr. Glenn has approximately 20 spaces for customers to park in front of the building on the property and intends to have the used cars displayed alongside the fence behind the front of the building on the west side. These cars will be available through a slider gate, as well as being able to be driven to the front of the building by CFI Tire employees. This is not going to be a large-scale used car operation, as you might, you know, believe on West Broadway that would come to mind. Rather, CFI Tire intends to only market approximately three cars for sale at a time. In the event they require repair, he intends to conduct minor automobile repair work on the interior of his existing buildings. This would not include any auto body or paint work, but include simple oil changes, brakes, alignments, things of that nature. He has submitted his application to the city zoning board of adjustment for a conditional use permit to allow equipment repair for tires and heavy equipment on the exterior of his building, which would be conditioned, of course, upon your approval of the rezoning application, of course, tonight. The majority of the surrounding property parcels are utilized for agricultural purposes, as you've heard and seen in the staff report, as well as storage for Lewis Central Community School District buses. The granting of this rezoning application would allow an existing business to expand and, while not having any impact on the neighboring properties. This rezoning application certainly fits well within the surrounding properties, as I1 and I2 parcels are located very near to the subject property. Mr. Glenn is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Does anybody have any questions? Dick, I know that the request was to waive third, and under the circumstances, we probably won't be able to do that. Is there any way to subdivide that off, or does it have to be taken all?
I mean, if the council would like to just remove some of the expanded, the staff at expanded area, it sounds like the only section that really would come into play would be the one that's currently in the yellow hash marks next to the creek. If they delete that section and move forward, they go ahead and do it. Staff did make the recommendation that it be expanded, but I don't think that change was, anyway, impacted the request of the applicant.
Is there any specific reason why we have to waive third and rush this into approval tonight versus two weeks?
They have the zoning board of justice but hearing coming up. When is that, Ryan?
The 19th.
It will make them be a whole month off if we don't do it and have to wait another...
Do I have it right? We're talking about potentially removing the yellow hash zones, but keeping the blue?
Well, I think all we're really concerned about is the one yellow hash parcel that's adjacent to the east-south Omaha Bridge Road.
Ah, I see.
Is it the one that's written up as 1400 East-South Omaha Bridge Road? Is that the one?
The way I understand...
She gave her address.
In essence, the one most to the southwest, if this faces north?
Yeah, that one would be the one I would assume.
The 1400?
I would be fine, I'm just removing that, and then we can waive, that way we don't have to hold up the process.
Is that the proper address, ma'am?
What?
1400 East-South Omaha?
Yeah, that's my address, yes.
That seems appropriate. It would take care of everything else.
And is it owned by you, or is there a way to do it by ownership to make sure we get all the, because I'm sure it's a parcel, and I'm not sure, does the parcel all go to that address?
It's 10 acres commercial and 11 acres behind it, this agriculture. 600 foot frontage.
Are you only concerned about the rezoning of the, the rezoning of the one, the portion that abuts the east-south Omaha Bridge Road?
Yeah, I'd like to keep it commercial, that's what you're...
And you'd have no objection with the back 11 acres being rezoned?
They are already agricultural.
Okay, okay, good enough.
Okay.
Oh, well...
No, I have no objection to it at all.
Okay, so, yeah.
Okay.
It seems...
Yeah, I'm good. So should I make a motion, or is the public hearing still a bit...
We still have a public hearing is open. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Is there a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance without 1400, the property at 1400 East-South Omaha Bridge Road.
Second.
Now, I know this sounds ludicrous, but any discussion?
[laughing]
Well, I did want to say, Mr. Glenn was kind enough to give me a tour the other day, and I did notice that, I wanted to point out a few things that I thought are important to be said. First is, is he intends to pave a lot of areas that currently are grandfathered in as allowed to be gravel or other surfaces, and he told me he's going to pave them. He's putting in some screening fencing so that their expansion of their business, which will likely increase jobs certainly into the future, will be even better looking. It'll screen it. And there was an issue about the southeast-south Omaha Bridge Road itself, and I know I wanted to pass along that Public Works is taking a look at that to see if some of that cratering there can be fixed, hopefully as soon as possible. Has it been taken care of already? Oh, well, they are very good.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. They said they'd take a look at it quickly, and so, yeah, I think, yes, they're the ones who did it. And so I'm glad to hear that. And it sounds like the motion as amended makes all the neighbors happy. It allows you to expand your business and allows your neighbor not to have her property zoned when she doesn't, rezone when she doesn't want to. It sounds good to me.
So we clear, do we have a motion delineating removal of that?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of resolution 14-212, authorizing disposal of part of Crittendon Street lying east of the, east line of North Avenue. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it's on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor? If you give your name and address for the record, please.
Wade Stevenson, 301 North Avenue. My property adjoins that parcel of Crittendon Street that hasn't been developed, and my driveway currently resides on that right of way and is so steep that it's very dangerous to come down, even during the summer. So I'm looking at it as being a safety issue and requiring that, so I can cut down the driveway's slope.
Perfect. Any questions?
I wasn't even aware there was a street by that name. So clearly, it never been, at least not in modern times, been used.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, what the council's pleasure, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of resolution 14-213, which is the final plaid approval for a 23-lot residential subdivision to be known as Forest Glenn Subdivision Phase 5. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who wishes to speak against? Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
Doug Tweed, representing Tweed Engineering and Construction, 20659 McPherson Avenue of Council Bluffs, Iowa. And I'm mainly here just to answer questions, if there are any. I have the staff report, and I've reviewed it, and all of their comments are either addressed or in the process of being addressed. Probably the critical one is, is the final walkthrough, is the water main is not yet complete. They're really, really close. Soon as the water main's complete, it goes to a testing process, and then they'll do the intersections that are the only thing left to be done, and then the walkthrough will be scheduled.
Anybody have any questions for Doug? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 14-214, authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement, buy-in between the City of Council Bluffs and Two Mules LLC for the use of economic development incentives for the renovation of 719 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
The only discussion I have is to thank Mr. Kane for his investment and all the work that you do to rehabilitate buildings in that, in that area. It's much appreciated.
And I want to add, just so folks know where that building is, it's the former bar and laundry combination in the Haymarket downtown. And Mr. Kane proposes to restore the front to more, to as much as possible its historic appearance, restore the siding on the side so that it looks like it's from the right century the building was built in, and change the color to one that's perhaps less... [laughing] How about more historically accurate? And he's asking for a little bit of tax incentives related to it, because quite simply, it's going to cost far more to fix that than it'll be worth when it's done. And it's a whole heck of a lot better idea to fix up our existing buildings in town than to never fix those up and just build out. We should build out, but always fill in in the middle, too. And so I thank him, and this is a great, great thing to see.
I'm going to miss the yellow building.
Neon yellow.
Joking.
Feel free to change.
That's okay. Quite the spread, but close.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-215, endorsing an application for RISE program funds to construct a public improvement on Gifford Road from Veterans Memorial Highway to 45th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, the only discussion I have is the project, there's a shortfall of $111,502, so I remain hopeful that the engineering estimates and some of the finances going forward will cover that shortfall, or the costs will be lower than anticipated.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-216, rejecting all bids and authorizing the city clerk to re-advertise bids for the Mosquito Creek North Sewer relocation.
Motion to concur in staff recommendation.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-217, confirming the appointment of Tim Carmody as police chief with the City of Council Bluffs and approving the wage and benefit package offered.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Jean, did you want to name an address for the record, please?
I'm Jean Edwards, and I live at 115 East 29th Avenue. I came tonight to talk about the interview process for the position of police chief. I was a member of the five-person panel, which participated in both interview sessions, which were part of the process of selecting the new chief of police for Council Bluffs. From what I've been reading about in the newspaper, I feel that hearing about this part of the process might benefit you as a group. As you know, the interviews took place on two different days. The panel was made up of the same people for each of these interview sessions. The same nine questions were used for each session as well. The panel was made up of Ellen Stageman, the acting HR director for the city, Mayor Matt Walsh, his assistant Wendy, a federal DEA agent from an Omaha office, and me. The same nine questions were used for each session as well. The panel was made up of Ellen Stageman, the acting HR director for the city, Mayor Matt Walsh, his assistant Wendy, a federal DEA agent from an Omaha office, and me. The only person involved in the interviews, including those on the panel, were the interviewees, who I knew ahead of that day was Mayor Matt Walsh. I was told that I was selected to be a member of the panel as a representative of the public because I'm a landlord who's active in the local landlord association. Prior to the first interview, on the first day, the panel members received instructions on the process from the consultant who helped develop it. We each had a packet in front of us for every one of the applicants we would be interviewing that day. There were nine questions to each, nine questions, and each question had its own sheet of paper in the packet with objectives listed which were deemed to be an important component of an answer to that question. There were about four to six of these objectives for each question. As the person being interviewed answered each question, we panel members were each to take notes on that sheet of paper in our packet. The next step of each individual panel member would be to give each question a numerical score. The range was from one to nine with nine being the top score. We had written descriptions of what each number score would represent, such as how much did that answer to that question meet the expectations or exceed expectations or fall short of expectations as compared to the objectives which we were given for that particular question. So every question received a score from each panel member. The score of one, two, or three was identified as being in the low band. A score of four, five, or six was identified as being in the middle band and a score of seven, eight, or nine was identified as being in the high band. After each interviewee was dismissed from the room, we panel members would privately score their answers to each of the nine questions. When everyone was finished privately scoring, assigning the nine scores, we discussed them. We went through the questions one by one, voicing the score we gave. The goal was to all be within the same band. All in the top band, all in the middle band, or all in the low band for each question. If all five of us did not assign a score within the same band to a question, we would discuss our reasoning for assigning the score we did until one or more panel member either raised or lowered their score for that question, placing all scores in the same band. We did this for each of the nine questions, one by one. The score sheets were then tabulated by the HR office according to civil service requirements. Each of the nine questions for each interviewee were asked by this, in the same order every time, and we panel members would each take turns asking questions. We would each ask the same question to each interviewee. Due to where I was sitting, I asked question number two and question number seven to every person interviewed. We sat in the same position on both interview days, so I asked those same two questions to all interviewees. They also had a booklet of each question in front of them to refer to since most questions were multi-part. I was honored to have been asked to be a part of the process and I enjoyed working with that group of people on the panel.
Any questions for Jean?
Thanks for explaining to us. That was helpful to know how it all.
It actually clarified as well because I, I thought that we were told there were different questions for round one and two, so I appreciate the confirmation of what actually happened.
Anybody else? Does any, anyone from the council have any discussion?
Well, I guess for me, and I'm repeating what I said this afternoon, the resolution before us tonight is, is to confirm the appointment, the choice of, of Mayor Walsh. And there has been some discussion, there's been some, some questions regarding the process and that is a separate issue in my mind and we're not considering that or voting on that tonight. We're merely voting on the confirmation of, of the, the new police chief and I wholeheartedly support the mayor's decision and, and his choice. And it should be noted that all parties involved, on the police side, city side, and I believe city council, everyone seemed to believe that he was far and above the best choice, so just want to welcome Tim to the Council Plus family.
Well.
I, I would thank Officer Sharp for, for his contribution on, on this and earlier and especially his, his comments believing that that Mr. Carmody is, is, is the best candidate. And having said that, you know, I, I would have felt more comfortable had, had the Police Officers Union felt as though that the process had been transparent all along. It may well have been properly conducted, but anytime that there's a, there's a feeling that there's something that's less than transparent or that information isn't, isn't forthcoming as quick, as quickly as it should, I, I think that's something that we need to take a look at and, and look at policies so that, so that everyone is comfortable from, from start of the process to conclusion. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I pretty much will echo what Al has said. I know we've worked closely with, and Dean, if you want to say anything before we're done, you sure can. I see you like looking at us. But I know we've worked closely with the union, with different officers and then within the city, within all of us, to make sure that this is something everyone is confident with. Without a doubt, we want to welcome you to Council Plus. I think it's very exciting. But I do want to make sure that we sit down after this and work on ensuring that we have a process, not saying that this process is wrong by any means, but just something that everybody is much more comfortable with going forward.
And, and Mr. Sharp, I just want to thank you for, for your comments this afternoon and also for your request that the council ratify the decision on a five to four, five to zero vote.
Dean Sharp, I'm president of the Fraternal Order of Police, which is the police union for the police officer for the City of Council Bluffs. I, we, we've been over this before at the study session. I do want a five oh vote for Tim Carmody. I do think he's an excellent candidate. We've already been through the part where we can sit down and talk about the, the process. Mrs. Edwards, I much appreciate her serving on the board. That was never in question. We, we wanted some answers that weren't answered until very, very late in the process, actually Friday of last week. So that's, our, our major concerns were answered. We will agree to disagree on the process, but I think we can move forward. Now that Tim's in place, we can move forward and we welcome him aboard. Thanks, Dean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I wanted to say that I, I have, like all my colleagues, taken a very long look at this matter. I think all of us have put in quite a bit of time. I want people to know that, that we don't rush or take these decisions lightly, particularly something so as important as who our next police chief will be. I, not a single person I spoke with or anything I've read suggests anything other than high praise for the, the mayor's pick, Mr. Carmody. He appears to have an excellent resume. All of us had an opportunity to meet with him personally and speaking for myself, I found him to be a, a very distinguished gentleman who had a lot of good proactive ideas and seemed to really understand our community and I was also pleased to, to hear that he intends to live in our community and I, I commend him for that. I think that's very important. I look, I took, I had some concerns about the, the process. I, I still do. But I am satisfied as I sit here that all the legal requirements were met. I think every, any process can be improved and I think everybody here has been very respectful and, and responsible, saying that as we move forward, let's all sit down and take a look. Now, bearing in mind, the mayor had a very good point this afternoon, that nothing we as a council and do can bind future councils. We can't say we're going to establish this new process and it must be used forever. But we can, as part of the process, the mayor can recommend changes to the civil service process and, and I, I think there's some suggestion and, and I'd agree with it that we look at not only police but fire to see, while we're looking at it, what can be made better. And the mayor's made that commitment. He's, he's indicated, I believe this afternoon, that he, anyone who'd want to talk to that process or contribute to it's welcome and I commend him for that. And so I think two great things came out of this, this evening. And the first is, we're going to get an excellent police chief. And the second is, going forward in the future, the processes are going to be even more transparent and even better. And so I enthusiastically and completely support the mayor's selection and will be voting for Mr. Carmody.
Well, I just want to first thank the, the panel who served and spent a good amount of their time doing that. And I, I want to thank Jean for coming tonight. I called Jean once I understood that there were some concerns, just because I didn't understand the process. And she explained to me how the process worked and how formal actually those interviews were. And so I was quite impressed with that. They were done very professionally, so I appreciate that. And above and beyond everything else, I want to thank everybody involved, the union, our local police for, we all have the same motivation and that's to provide Council Plus with the most professional people we can and to keep our city moving forward. And, you know, there might have been some questions about the process, but I think the intent on all parties was to do what's best for the citizens of Council Plus and I want to just let everybody know how much I appreciate all the effort and thought that went into this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Resolution one four dash two one eight, creating an information technology department and adding the position of Chief Information Technology Director.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend you and, and, and thanks for the discussion and contribution on this earlier today. This is, this is something that makes a lot of sense to do to improve the technical side of, of operations here and, and it's something that's needed to be done for, for some time and I thank you for moving out as, as quickly and decisively on this as, as you have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any citizens' requests to be heard?
We have one other special event.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under applications and permits, six C.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. No citizens' requests to be heard?
I think there was one guy.
Anybody from the-
There was one guy.
Public that wants to speak? Can you give name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I can. I'm Michael Pate. I'm with the Electric Guard Dog from Columbia, South Carolina.
Michael had given me a call a couple of weeks ago. He has a company that installs electrified fence inside a fence. The council, a couple of years ago, talked about this in relation to Campers World and, and, and so since I can't explain it any better than that, I asked Michael if he'd come and kind of-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got a contract from Camping World to install an electric security fence for those folks. Went through the city to obtain a permit. We're told, eh, we probably couldn't get a permit here in Council Bluffs. I met with Don Gross to basically explain what we had out there and was attempting to get him to look at us not as a fence but as a security system for a couple of reasons. One is, we're always behind the existing fence line, so no one can ever bump into us, touch us unless they're actually penetrating a perimeter fence. We're an alarm. We're a registered alarm company in the state. We actually use this device also as an alarm as well as a preventive device. So we were hoping that we might be able to get a decision from Don to declare us an alarm and be able to go ahead and issue a permit. After we had discussions with the city staff, he came to a conclusion he probably was not allowed to do that under the law. I talked to the mayor about this and he asked me to come forward to explain what we do and to give you a little background on, on how we actually provide security for these folks. Well, we're located all over the country. We're, we're in Des Moines, we're right across the river in Omaha. You know, some large cities you might be able to recognize are Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, Kansas City. I'm just trying to think some places right around what I consider local.
And one of the, and I'll interrupt you quickly just so that, give them a point of reference. When we addressed this, when I was on the council, we could not find other jurisdictions that had them, but in talking with you, that's not the case in today's world.
No, sir. I've, I've got about thirty-five hundred fences in place right now all over the country. Basically, it's a pretty simple system. You know, living out here where you do, you're probably familiar with a cattle fence or a livestock fence. It's very similar to that. We're always battery powered. We've got a twelve volt battery. I keep those batteries charged with a couple of solar panels. So I'm never attached to the electrical infrastructure at all. I take that twelve volts and I amplify it with an energizer or capacitor somewhere between seven and nine thousand volts. Takes about a second and a half to do that. Once I have that capacitor loaded up, I release that charge down the line. Takes three ten thousandths of a second to do a quick perimeter check on that line. It's red back to an alarm panel, so I'm looking for any drop in voltage out there. So they get a drop in voltage, a specific limit that I set for five pulses, which is about seven or eight seconds. I know there's something going on out there and I'm going to set the alarm off silently back in Columbia, South Carolina and audibly on the site. I go through a call list. I never go straight to the police. I'm going through a call list, so I'm going to call Mayor Walsh. She's number one on my call list at two o'clock in the morning. "Mr. Mayor, you got a break on the northern perimeter, two hundred and twenty feet from the northeastern corner," because I can measure these breaks down to about ten feet. "What do you want to do?" Well, if we're all smart and we probably have a camera up there also, he can sit at home with his computer, bring up that particular line on the computer and go, "Hey, it was kind of windy out in Council Bluffs this evening. We got a little piece of metal out there." Similar to what might happen if, with that automobile recycling center you were looking at. "Let's shut it down, guys, and go back to bed." Or I got five guys in hoodies with a flatbed truck robbing us blind. Let's please call the local police department. That's basically what we do. The types of businesses we guard are like Camping World. Anyone that's got a law, a lot of high-value inventory that sits out in the open that anybody can see and just walk by and say, "Hey, that's something I might want to tag tonight." That's what we do and we're basically asking you to recommend or consider amending the, the local ordinance to allow the use of electric security fences.
And one of the concerns, my recollection is, public safety officials, if there were a fire or our police officers are there and you address that and can you kind of?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's fairly simple. Most jurisdictions, specifically fire, have a universal keyed, that's keyed for that particular jurisdiction. It's called a Knox box or a lock key. Some, some municipalities like Chicago have their own specific systems that you actually have to key. You basically run up to the gate, hit the key, gate runs open, system knocks down, the fire runs in and, the fire department runs in and puts out the fire. All my systems are also tested and labeled to a standard, an international standard, just like a UL standard. So they're, they're a completely safe, reliable product. It's always behind another fence too. It's very important. So, just in case, there's a sidewalk there, which rarely there is because we're usually just in industrial, commercial zones, heavily commercial zones. There's usually not a sidewalk on a site like that unless, unless you're in a really pre-planned development with a lot of large warehousing opportunities in it.
So, the person who trips this wire, I'm assuming they get electrocuted?
No, ma'am.
No?
They get a shock. They will not get electrocuted.
So they'll get a shock? And that's, that's my question.
They will have a memorable, memorable experience, yes, ma'am.
So it's like a dog sent, a dog fence for people?
Completely different. A dog fence is actually a radio-controlled fence.
Okay.
So it's more like a cattle or a livestock fence.
Okay.
Where it's got a couple of wires out, trying to keep a two thousand pound animal in. I'm just trying to keep the animals out, so to speak.
And see, here's my only concern with it is that, I don't have a problem with it. If they're not, if they're not going in there for the right reasons and they get shocked, I, I don't really have a problem with that. But here's the thing, if that commercial business can do that, I would like to be able to do that on my own property. And that's where I think we're going to end up with a concern because now we're, you know, it, now you are talking about, you know, people walking down the sidewalk or, or kids jumping a fence or something and, and I, I just worry, you know, I don't know how those ordinance are, are written, so it might be really helpful if we could see how they've been written in the other communities you've done it in. Because I don't know how I can tell you yes and tell my neighbor no.
Well, counsel, the way, the way that I've basically had the, the rules written almost everywhere I go, they're strictly forbidden in residential zones. They're more or less zoned into industrial I-ones, I-twos, manufacturing zones and heavy commercial zones that might have, let's say, equipment rental opportunities for folks. After that, there's really no use for them. And so we basically write into the ordinances where they're not used in those zones but in other specific zones. So, that's basically how you take care of that. I've got tons of models and real-life applications that I'd be glad to share with the city.
And just to restate the obvious, that this, these are always in a fenced area anyway.
Yes, sir. Either behind a fence or a wall. So just depending on what the particular fence codes are for that area. In, in many areas, especially in industrial manufacturing, they have to be walled. they have to be walls up. So we're actually behind them. It just depends on what the local ordinances are. But there's a regulated, permitted fence or wall up first, and we go behind that to the interior of the property.
Yep, very good.
All right. Well, can you, if you would, send maybe some standard zoning language that's been used in other communities, and I'll get it to...
Be glad to, Mr. Mayor.
And we can maybe talk about it.
In your experience, have there been any sort of signage requirements?
Yes, and there are. Part of the standard is, actually, requires signage. Almost everywhere I go now, I've got it in at least two languages, Mexican, Mexican, Spanish and English.
Sure.
The only reason I say that is because in Louisiana, I've got it in the Arcadian language. I've got Russian in New York and New Jersey. I've got many languages on my signs, depending on the local population. So minimum, Mexican, Spanish, English, every 60 feet or so.
I don't see any harm in taking a look at it, and then, you know, I hadn't heard of that. I'd like to know more.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other, anyone else?
I was just gonna bring up a point. Sharon, all commercial buildings, 8 Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue, all fencing for commercial buildings has to be a certain quality or height. You can't put up an eight-foot fence around your house, put barbed wire on it.
Right.
Commercial building can. That's one of the differences. If you put it into the language with that, there's no problem with it.
And my intent wasn't to be opposed to it. I just think that there's people who would probably like to have some extra...
Well, everybody wants everything.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I understand...
Present company.
...the applications of it and how we're going to...
Yeah, because I wanted to put up ribbon wire, and then you got...
My problem's the deer, not people, but...
I'm not sure on a given day which I'd prefer to keep off the lawnmower, but...
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I want to congratulate Matt Walsh for your position as mayor.
Thank you very much. Couldn't we get your name and address for the...
Richard McGee. I grew up in Council Bluffs, went TJ, live on 1736 Avenue B.
Hi, Dick.
Went to school with the old mayor, Tom Anoffin.
I used to deliver beer to Dick.
Yes, you did. Well, anyway, the problem is, they put this highway in, Veterans Memorial Highway, and they left me a big mess. I don't know if it's my mess or their mess. Somebody's a mess. Would you like to look at a few photos?
Motion to receive.
Second.
Pictures of the mud hole they left in front of my property. I have a restaurant and tavern I've been working on for, since 1980, trying to clean the corner up, make a good respectable place for people to come and have fun and enjoy theirselves. And this is what they leave.
Do you want these pictures back, sir?
Sure.
Do we have a color scanner?
Can you?
Maybe we could just scan and give it back.
We'll receive and file them, so we'll have to get copies of it before...
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
I've talked to so many people about this, I can't get no response. I talked to Rich Sordich from West, Iowa West Foundation. I've talked to Sharon White's husband.
Veterans Memorial.
Bill William, William White?
White.
Your husband?
Yeah, that's...
I've talked to Emily Clark from Iowa Congressman Tom Latham. I wrote people letters. I have an aerial view of what I recommend to carry that curb and gutter through and bring it down where the drainage ditch is.
Yes, I'll have somebody go take a look at it, Dick.
Now, there's another thing.
Do you know, just off the top of your head, is the street elevation higher than the front of your property? So if they put, filled it with...
They brought filled dirt in and created a big berm all the way around there, so water cannot drain.
Okay.
Here's more pictures I took recently. This is right out the front door of my business. This is right out the front door. My customers walk out my front door and see this. I don't know who to talk to. I guess I should have came here before I talked to anyone.
Oh, I see, because some of this is only...
Okay, that's, that's that problem. Now, there's another problem. Where they ended their street in their intersection, they stopped it here, and the drainage ditch starts here. There's nothing to connect that to that. And it's all getting undermined, all the concrete shifting, and it's a mess. That's another issue.
That is pretty ridiculous.
I hired a lawyer, McGinn Law Firm. He called the state on the telephone. Nobody can go look at this. They have to talk to each other on the phone. In response, I'll let you read it yourself. Due to the customers in the bar, it don't drain. That was their response. So my lawyer said, my lawyer said, "Okay, that must be the problem. My customers make it not drain."
Oh, it accuses them of driving over the area, the bar patrons. They're driving over the area.
But it also says they graded it out a couple times. How do you grade a mud hole out?
Dick, I'll have them take a look. It actually is State Highway 275.
Now, I've offered to pay for the concrete. I figured it's probably 20 by 80-foot. It'd probably take $4,000 or $5,000 worth of concrete. I'll pay for that concrete. I'll grade it out. I'll set the forms. I'll go by code. I'll go by city code.
All right.
I worked for Kiwett Heavy Highway. When I got out of high school, I set forms. And I'd been in the concrete business all my life.
Looks like they need to tile it, maybe.
They need to run that curb and gutter down and run it into that drainage ditch.
Yeah.
All right, I'll...
I can draw a diagram. I can lay it out and have it approved by the city.
Okay. Would we be able to do anything about that, since it's a state highway?
I don't know. I gotta find out.
Yeah, because some of that's there.
It's a state highway, but it might, I don't know who the right of it belongs to.
Yeah, that'd be the question.
That's why I haven't been to the city, because it is a state. And how do you buck the state? I hired a lawyer, and he can't do nothing. I mean...
It's ridiculous. Yeah, let me make some phone calls and see if I can get further than you did.
There's some law, and then there's practicality.
I don't know what to do about it. So I figured it's in the city of Council Bluffs. Maybe somebody can do something.
Yeah, Dick, I'll get you my business card afterwards, and I'll look into it.
Thank you, man.
I usually don't complain about a lot of stuff, but I don't know. I've tried and tried to improve that place. I've been there since 1980, and that's all I've done, is try to improve. I don't know.
I'll get you my card. Thanks for...
Any questions?
No, I think Matt's gonna look at...
Pretty clear.
Yeah. The mayor's gonna follow up.
Sharon, your wife, your husband, he's a good guy. I like him.
You don't know him.
I don't know if I want to sit between you.
I want to copy them, so can I mail them back to you or stop and pick them up later this week?
You want to keep talking, and then we'll be together?
Yeah.
This is his original letter, though. Can Matt give you that back? Do you need that letter?
I don't. You want him to take a copy, Jody, and then we'll send it to you, Dick.
I can. We'll send everything back to you. Do you want...
It's a common response.
Yeah. Do you want to keep a copy of the letter?
Yeah, we're all right.
Okay.
Sure.
You've been good. Welcome. Welcome anytime.
Am I done?
You're done.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks.
If you listen to me and...
Yeah, I'll be in touch.
Okay, Matt, thanks.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
I'm Robert Wigan. I'm the general manager at Camping World, where he was talking about the fence. Kind of jumping around here a little bit, I guess.
You throwing the address down, right?
Yeah, 2802 South 24th Street, 21st Street, Council Bluffs. Anyway, just to kind of go along with what he was talking about, we have this fence in three other facilities of Camping World, and we've cut down on theft by hundreds of thousands of dollars. I took this dealership over first of November. And from November until this fence first went up in January, we had already been hit for well over $40,000 in that short amount of time of people cutting the fence and coming through. And one, I just kind of kind of reiterate this a little bit. This fence, we have an existing fence that's standard code for Council Bluffs. Well, in order to reach this electric fence, you literally have to go in a foot, foot and a half just to even touch it. So it's definitely going to be somebody that's really trying to penetrate the perimeter of our business. And since then, of course, you know, we've had to hire security again, because I thought it was all done, and we had permits and everything, and I think they did, too. Well, it wasn't. So needless to say, we had to shut it down. Since then, we've had to rehire security, and we have problems. When we only have security there, we have problems. But the short time we had that fence up there, we had zero, nobody coming in. So it saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars in a year's time.
And sir, if I may, I assume having security is considerably more expensive than...
Much more, more than double, more than double the price. And it doesn't work, even though we have security, and they're good people, and their intentions are right, you know, that's...
Can't see everywhere all the time.
No, you can't. So this really cuts down, it doesn't just cut down on it, it cuts it out to where we don't have the problem. So I just wanted to share that with you a little bit, so you kind of have an idea of where we're coming from and the main reasons that I'm very interested in having that done. And I know they got to go through the right channels and whatnot. And anyway, if there's any other information you need, you guys know where to locate me. Feel free to stop by, and I'm there about every day. So if I can answer any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Mark Hanson, 110 High Clear. Wanted to come by with some cheers today for you guys. About a month ago, maybe a little bit more, I came in and asked you, you know, to give a little bit more credence to trying to get us a new police chief. And we've got one. I think he's a great pick. Obviously, one of the biggest selling points I see in this town is accessibility. Anyone can come up and talk to anybody up here on the council or walk right into the mayor's office and have a great discussion. And this just goes to show, you know, a simple request can actually be taken care of. And it kind of reminds you more that, you know, this town is much more Mayberry than it is like a Rambo town. And I'd like to see it keep going that way. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ken Randolph. We live at 224 McGee Avenue. We've experienced a lot of problems in the last year and a half. We have a problem neighbor. Apparently, he's come to the council before, so now it's our turn to tell our side of the story. We've been investigated many times by the city, from a dirty yard, to dogs running loose, dogs not being fed, dogs being beaten. We've been accused of people living in our camper. It's, no, it's not happening. Been accused of running a business out of my home. I fixed my little brother's car, my aunt's car, my family's car. If something needs to be done, that's what family does for each other. Most recently, last Thursday, I had to leave work three hours early, because I had a detective and a police officer show up and do what is called a knock-and-walk on our house, investigating for drugs. Each time something has been claimed or reported to the city council or the mayor's office, it has been found that it's not true. You know, this comes from a neighbor, he seems to have a personal vendetta against us. We know what it's from. I really don't want to go into those details, because it's really personal. He's told the police that he wants us gone, and he wants to be thrown in jail, as in, anybody's right. You have a right to defend your family and your property. And that's all I've ever done, is defend my family. He has a complete neighborhood wound-up. I mean, everybody is creating problems now. It's insane up there. It's impossible to live peacefully. He's a chronic complainer, obviously. I'm wondering when the city council or the mayor's office is going to actually tell this guy to please stop. It's getting out of control. This is creating a stressful life for us. I have a six-year-old daughter. She doesn't need to see this when it's going on. You know, like I said, it affects our family life, our privacy, and it's bullying at its best. He wants us to leave. We bought our house. We own it. We're gonna stay. But I'm just wondering what the council's willing to do to help us resolve this issue, because obviously, he's coming to you with these problems.
Actually, I'd forwarded an email to you today, and I don't know if you got it.
I was late in the day.
Which frankly, after some investigation, would bear out exactly what you're saying, so...
Is that the, that group that came the one time?
Yeah.
And they said, like, somebody had a gun or something? Was that the...
It was a BB gun.
A BB gun.
I had an air rifle on our porch. I was putting a scope on it. We shoot targets in our backyard, because we have a backstop. It's to the point where it's out of control. I mean, somebody needs to probably confront this gentleman with the city and tell him, you know, "Listen, these complaints are ridiculous. The guy's, you know, obviously, we're not doing anything wrong. The city hasn't found anything wrong. The police department hasn't found anything wrong. I offer the police department a key to my house anytime they want to come over." I mean, that's, I shouldn't have to do that.
I'd actually spoken with the gentleman and told him as much, and have not gotten a call back in 30, 45 days. And so hopefully, it's...
Hopefully, it's over.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Anybody else? Anyone from the council?
Welcome, chief. And we are adjourned.